Okay, I'm getting a signal from the boss that we need to get started. Again, we want to thank all the tenured teachers for coming on in this cold evening. This was a wonderful experience for us to see the enthusiasm and the positive spirit of all the principals and the teachers. We want to wish you the best of luck on your journey. That was a lot of fun to witness. Call the meeting to order. Will Member Slagapunko please read the roll?
All right. Thank you Chair Murneke, Member Harla, Member Johnston, Member Lefler Kim. Chair Murneke.
Here.
I am here. Member Walty.
Here.
Member Westholm.
Here.
Superintendent Gronseth.
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Crawford.
Deputy Clerk Hanson.
Secretary Tebow.
And student representatives Paul Manning.
Here.
And Kobe Tremble. We are, we have a quorum. Chair Murneke.
Thank you. Would you all please join me as we honor America to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Technical break. Thank you. Motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Member Slagapunko, second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Walty. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Posed? Passed seven, nothing. Thank you. Reading of the minutes. Regular school board meeting, October 21st, 2014. A motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Member Westholm, second? Seconded by Member Slagapunko. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Posed? No. But, and now, again, we just had a wonderful prelude to this with our tenured teachers. It was, it was just great to see it. Now we move on to another part that I, I just enjoy so much, the school and community recognition. And Assistant Superintendent Crawford, if you would, if the rest of the board would come down.
Good evening, members of the board. This month, I'm pleased to present representatives from the Denfeld and Duluth East School Key Clubs for recognition. Key Club is, is an international student-run service organization, providing opportunities to build character and develop leadership by creating a better community through acts of service. Working individually and in partnership, both the Denfeld and Duluth East High School Key Clubs are making significant contributions to our community. Recently, the two clubs worked together to help collect donations for Lifehouse, an organization dedicated to helping homeless teens. This camp and a box event collected over $3,400. The Denfeld Key Club recently celebrated its 30th anniversary. They worked to collect over $1,000 for the Feed Local Kids campaign and are collecting items for Operation Christmas Child and Toyland Express. The Duluth Key Club recently, the Duluth East Key Club recently helped clean up Lesmore Road. They worked with Kiwanis of friendly Duluth members as part of the Adopt a Highway program. They'll be working on Light the Lake Walk with Lifehouse in December and Bell Ringing for the Salvation Army. The list of activities for both Key Clubs, past and future, literally could go on and on and on. Congratulations to our High School Key Club and the excellent work they're doing in helping the community.
for all of the groups we have and the Key Club advisors. I know them both, wonderful people, and they do a lot of extra work. Okay, moving on to audience. We start off with Teri Dzuk. Welcome, Teri. Three minutes. Teri, before you start, I forgot to do the normal speech. Speeches are restricted to three minutes, and you know the rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening Superintendent Gronseth, Chair Murneke, and board members. My name is Teri Dzuk, and I am the President of Education Minnesota Duluth Clerical. I just want to take a minute or two on behalf of our 11 elementary and two middle school support staff, who with this evening's board approval will receive an administrative reclassification. We are here to share our heartfelt appreciation to Superintendent Gronseth, Bill Hanson, Tim Sworoski, Harrison Dudley, Ed Crawford, and last but not least, our wonderful principals for their support as we went through this administrative reclassification process of these essential and dedicated 11 staff. Please indulge me as I share a couple email responses I received from them after hearing the official word of approval pending board action. Pending board action. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I am overwhelmed and blessed beyond words. Thank you, Teri. Thank you, principals. Very gratifying. My goodness, this is great. Wow, what a wonderful news for our group. Thank you to all who support it and fought for us. It means a lot. Thank you all so much for your support and the hard work it took to make this happen for us. It means so much to work with administrators who appreciate and recognize us for the work that we do. Congratulations Elementary Support Specialist Seniors. Thanks to those who worked to make this happen and to all of you in the schools working so hard to help our students be successful. Many thanks to Sue Lena for getting the ball rolling. This is something we have hoped for, for many years. Wow. And I just have to let you know that every statement was, ended with multiple explanation marks. As you can see, we are all grateful to all of you involved in making this well-deserved reclassification a reality. Not only do they feel validated, appreciated, and recognized, this reclassification will have a very positive impact on many of them in the area of their financial stability, which is a huge blessing. With that, I am here to ask that the school board wholeheartedly and unanimously add your support by voting yes to the non-certified reclassifications portion of the Human Resources Board report. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Barb Walcom. Thank you for coming out on this chilly night.
Good evening Chair Murneke and members of the board. Tonight, I'd like to talk about the civility code, which you didn't mention, but you usually do. It doesn't seem to be an equal opportunity code, because at last, school board meeting, regular school board meeting, Member Johnston was interrupted by a school board employee who came up to this mic and started shouting at him about his marital status and said a lot of other mean-spirited things, which was extremely rude. And he ended his comments by calling Art Johnston's partner "that woman." That woman's name is Jane Bushy, and she's a valued employee of ISD 709. All of this started June 10th, when allegations were made public against Member Johnston. There were 50 people or more in the audience that night, and none of us were allowed to speak. There were also many media people here, and this is the reader's version of it, and I'll just read a short amount of it. And the title starts out, "The School Board Dysfunctional and Mean-Spirited." Vice Chair Bill, and this is written by Robert Boone quoting, "Vice Chair Bill Westholm said repeatedly that the intent of this meeting was merely to decide whether or not an investigation should be launched by the board into the allegations, and therefore there was really no point in allowing any public comment." So none of the people who were here to support Art were allowed to speak, and many members were from the African community. Again and again, he kept saying the meeting was just a benign impartial proceeding. It seemed to be completely incomprehensible to him that a board member might actually want to know the details of accusations prior to taking actions. It might ruin someone's reputation, and which is certain to be a rather expensive proposition that you wouldn't allow Member Walty to ask any questions. Art Johnston was voted in, reelected by 54% of District Four last fall, and his challenger had 46% of the vote. I think it's time to end this. I also would like to say that three of our kids graduated from East High School, and my daughter Jill had you Chair Murneke for a teacher. And I asked her recently what she thought of you, and she said two things. She said you made learning fun, and you were a very fair-minded person. I think it's time for this witch hunt to end. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marcia Stromgren. Again, thanks for coming out on this cold evening.
Good evening, board members. Administration, I have a few comments after learning that my taxes are going to go up Seems the district is going to ask for the max. Well, I am a very dissatisfied customer. Sorry on the civility code, I will not be agreeable when my taxes keep increasing, and the rate of learning has not increased with these phenomenally new buildings, which we're supposed to set a new atmosphere and set a new experience for learning. And I will quote from The Budgeteer 9714, Mr. Gronseth. However, their growth rates were often outpaced by students who are not of color, not living in poverty, and not receiving special education services. So while student achievement overall is increasing, in some cases, the achievement gap increased. How is it that a school in North Minneapolis, mostly people of color disadvantaged, has a 99.5% or 7% rate of graduation? I heard you say one time in a meeting, Mr. Gronseth, that, oh, we should go to Denmark and look at the example of a particular school over there that was so successful. Well, don't spend my tax dollars on it. Go on down to North Minneapolis and find out what you're doing wrong, because, you know what? Those kids come to school, they're told, "You come here to learn, and you will obey," or "you will be told to go home and not return." It's time to get your act together. You've had plenty of time to improve this achievement gap, and I'm tired of paying for something that you're not doing right, and I'd like to know when you're going to start. And the civility code. You know, prior to the civility code, the Bible, how many thousands of years ago was that written? Thou shalt not bear false witness against thy neighbor. That's also called lying. This business with Art Johnston, I understand the 62-page report didn't reveal anything that he did allegedly assaulting Mr. Gronseth and Murneke at a East High School graduation ceremony. And I'd like to know why the police weren't called. I think I asked this question once before. When you have an assault charge, you should call the police. So, one other thing. Mr. Sworoski, your actions, and I unfortunately wasn't here, but I have heard enough about it, read the newspaper, I want you to find out about common-law wife. Check it out before you say something about somebody's partner, which you had no business saying in the first place. This board is despicable. Not one person stood up for Art Johnston.
Thank you very much. Member Harla, is there, are there any other people signed up to speak?
No.
No, thank you. We now go on to the report of the superintendent. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you Chair Murneke. To start off with, I just want to congratulate the newly-tenured teachers again. We had a wonderful celebration before the board meeting, and I want to thank the principals who shared a little bit about all of those teachers and those who arranged for the celebration this evening, and of course, for the Sterling Strings who serenaded the group. And I'm always amazed at their talents and thank them very much for being here tonight. In addition to the Key Club accomplishments that we celebrated here tonight, our kids have been very busy, and I'm, I'm always so impressed with the events and the opportunities that our kids are creating for themselves and for staff and for the whole community. An example of that was the Path to Peace Walk that was organized by some students at East High School, but involved kids from, excuse me, from both high schools and a lot of people from the community that came out on a very chilly Saturday morning to walk from the canal to the library, where they had a gathering to talk about bullying in our community and how we can prevent it and how we respond to it when it happens. And it was, it was a great event. We also had Socktober at Congdon, where kids were collecting socks for those in need and had a lot of fun and a very successful event there. We had Feed the Hungry, which I believe we are going to hear a little bit about next board meeting, from the teachers and the DFT who organized that event. And, you know, our students are making a big difference in our community and really leading the way for so many kids, and we're very proud of the work that we're doing. I also wanted to mention that on November 6th, we had our first annual meeting that replaced the State of the District address that was traditionally held in January. And in that, we shared progress on the district-wide continuous improvement plan and World's Best Workforce Plan, and it went, it went very well. And I want to thank all of the students and the staff who helped to make that possible. We had the Myers Wilkins world beat drummers there, the Sterling Strings were there, the culinary students in their classes as part of their lessons created the, the treats that were there that night, and Deb Hanu had art displays, and many of the organizations in our community and within our district had informational booths there, and it was a great celebration. I just want to thank everyone that, that came out to join us for that event and, and who helped to present that information. Also, last Friday, I took a group of realtors from Duluth on a school bus, and we toured schools in the district and had a really great time talking about the features and benefits of all of our schools, and they got a chance to talk to some principals and see some kids and, and see the new buildings. And the response was so great that they immediately said, "All right, when are we taking the next tour? Let's see the rest of the schools, and we want to bring more of our friends with." And so we're in the process of planning another event for them. And I do want to say that, you know, you've mentioned a few times that it's cold out, and of course, with the first snow, I, there were a lot of kids tweeting at me about closing school, and we did not close school. You know, it was, it was a close call on that. But I do want to remind folks that we have a, a new tool in the toolbox of responding to cold or snowy weather, and that is a two-hour late start. And there's information on our website about that and what that means for people, generally speaking. Everything happens the same, just two hours later than it usually does. And board members, you will have some information in your Friday packet, kind of an information sheet that we've sent home with students as well, just so you have that same information. And then, one last thing, there are going to be many opportunities in the coming weeks for the community and for school board to get out to our schools and see lots of performances that happen around this time of school, with our bands and our orchestras and our choirs, or some of them all combined. They also spend a lot of time out in the community with performances too, and it's, it's adds so much to the season, I think, when they, when they share their talents. It just brings a, a special joy. And I thank them for the, the hard work that they put into those. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. You know, I'm still reminded of having to go up to the band room and inform the band teacher, that, band director, that they will be marching in the Christmas City and North Parade. It wasn't always the best message to bring, but, you know, when you re, and I've been down there, I've watched it, when you see the, the bands go by and the cheerleaders and the dance teams, and I think it's an experience. And my daughters, both my daughters are in band, and they, they went through it, and it's one of those things, all of a sudden you spin around, and they're 30 years old, and they're talking about marching in a Christmas City parade. So, good luck to those hearty souls as they go out and show our district what kind of music program we have. Thank you. We now move on to a report of the standing committees. We start off with Member Harla in the Education Committee.
Hit your button. There you go.
Thank you Chair Murneke. I actually did, I think, 11 years with Stacy's Studio Dancing in the parade, so there's nothing like those hand warmers that are, that keep you nice and warm. We had a, just so folks know, the, the weather actually canceled our committee meetings last Monday, so we had a marathon meetings last Wednesday evening. Thank you to board members and staff that stuck around for a very long night of good discussion, of four hours of meetings, which is great. So our first, for informational item, we had a great presentation from Jeremy Hollein, who is with the Minnesota Purpatch Center for Arts Education. They are Minnesota's resource for arts education in Minnesota. And he and their staff provide curriculum support and, and arts education opportunity support all across the state. We also receive some funding from them as well, too, for our arts program, and it was a, it was a great, a great presentation. And then, one of the pieces that he did highlight is that Minnesota is rewriting arts standards in the coming years for Minnesota statewide, for curriculum. And I do know that our Curriculum and Instruction Director will be on top of all of that moving forward, and so glad to know that he was there. And Deb Hanu, our staff that supports that area, was here as, as well as one of our new art teachers. The next piece is our Regulation 6095R, Curriculum K-12. This is a regulation, not a policy, just for folks listening, if you ever have questions. Regulations are, are put forward by our staff and can be decided on by the administration. Policies are passed by the board. This is our, our regulation so that we can start moving, moving forward the timeline for students to make decisions on classes in the coming year. And so, we're receiving this as a regulation so that we can get some more information in advance, and then we'll be, this is a preemptive regulation to a policy that will be coming forward. It's an update to reflect that students will have an additional .5 per year, .5 credits per year to have their win time accounted for. Sorry, .25, sorry. .25 credits per year for the win or what I need programming. And so, we'll have an updated number of credits for our students that they'll need to complete to graduate. It will, it will be, it will be a step program, so seniors this year will not be affected by that amount, and you'll see in your board packet that we do have it outlined as to the number of credits per year graduating, but it, it is an opportunity and it does account for the additional time that students are spending in school for the win, what I need time. The next piece is for the, the new FabLab elective course proposal for the 2015-2016 school year. This is, again, a part of that, a part of the classes we'd like to offer in the coming year, and so, they, this is, it's recommended that's received information, but talk to us, to us a little bit about the fabrication lab that we'll be having. And it's providing students knowledge base to take an idea from a prototype using prototype product using off-the-shelf and using industrial-grade fabrication and electronic tools with open course software to create a prototype. So, pretty exciting and a great opportunity. This is another piece of how we can be preparing our students for all different types of jobs in the future, and we've been hearing a lot in the paper about alternative types of classes to offer. I think this would be a great opportunity for students heading into many careers from trades and, and so on. The next piece is Regulation 5040, Student Transfers. I'm sure there will be a lot of discussion on this by board members. This is the regulation of how that, the policy that we'll see in the action item session will, section will walk out. Just to note some highlights of this, principals will be more involved in, in the, principals have been slightly involved, but will be more involved in the decision-making of, of students coming in. There's also a class size that, an average class size per grade level that's listed in those regula, in, in that regulation, and you'll see also in the policy, that will be a guide and tool for when students are transferring in. This regulation and policy does not affect your, the school that you're currently living in. So if you live in the Laura MacArthur area, you are still assigned and can go to the Laura MacArthur School. That does not make a change to it. It's, what, this is whether a student will be transferring from one school to another in the district, or if students are coming from outside the district into the district. So, good to know, and I'm sure other board members will have comments on that. The next piece is, we received a good update from Pam Reese on our Duluth Head Start. Once again, the Governing Board Policy and Governance Council, Governance Council, and it was recommended that Duluth School Board accept and approve her presentation on the Governan, Governing Board and Policy Council Governance Screening. And then also, she let us know the results of the Head Start's health and safety screening. So, it is recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the above item. I'd say that our Head Start is, again, in her presentation, what she heard, what she's heard from grantors with Head Start is that we continue to be ahead of the pack and do a really great job with providing our Head Start programming, and so, the little things that they talked about, like making sure there's a flashlight connected to the doorframe of every classroom that is in place now, and that they're, they're sending out information on a yearly basis, now a little bit more. And the next piece is Policy 5040, Transfers Within the School District. And Chair, did you want me to, do we want to move these separately, or did you want to do that? Maybe this will get.
We can do this one as, as a whole vote on, on the whole report.
Okay. So, it would be recommended that, and I just spoke about the Policy 5040, Transfers Within the School District. I'm sure we'll have discussion after the end of the report. It is recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve Policy 5040, Transfers Within the School District for the, for its first reading. So, this will be the very first reading, is to go through two readings. The next piece is some extended field trip requests. Piedmont Elementary 4th Grade Students Traveling to Wolf Ridge in March, and then Duluth Public Schools, Future Farmers of America Going to University of Minnesota in Crookston in December. So it's recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the above. So, it's recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the above extended field trip requests. Then it's requested that the YMCA, that that it is recommended Duluth School Board accept and approve the YMCA for the for their data sharing agreement. And then Resolution, should I move this separately, Chair, or just read this? And I'm on.
I'm sorry, are we on Dino?
Yep.
Okay, that's one, when you're done, we're going, you're going to move it in second, and we'll vote on that.
Great. So, whereas Minnesota Statute 46, 465.03 requires the school district to accept grants by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full, and whereas acceptance of grants in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below-described grants from said organizations in accordance with the terms set forth herein. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various organizations. And that's US Department of Education to our, to support our our Indian education program. The Minnesota Department of Education had gave Denfeld High School Alternatives to Suspension Grant there in the second cohort to support the continuation of reduced out-of-school suspensions at Denfeld High School. That's been a topic that a lot of folks have talked about. And so, I'm glad to see that we are a part of this cohort. Look forward to hearing more from Tanya Sconyers in the futures, future about that. The next piece is the Ordine Foundation for Habitat Teen Parent Collaborative Grant. And then the Minnesota State Art Arts Board for an arts grant, arts learning grant funded to Woodland Hills Academy. So, I move Resolution for, sorry, Resolution E-11-14-3210.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Member Laffler Kemp. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, that passes seven-nothing. E.
Thank you, Chair. And then approval of independent provider requests. So, attached for the school board approval are independent provider requests for the Minnesota High School Cycling League and the G-Team Snowboarding League. I know we had some conversations about this the last two months. It's another opportunity for our students to have a spark to keep them in school and to get them, to have them be connected. You know, those those additional things are really important for our kids. So, it is recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the above items. And then the following students have depleted, completed all high school graduation requirements and should be awarded a diploma, Maria Reñe and Alex Prince. So, it is recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the above diploma requests, and I move my report.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Member Laffler Kemp. Any discussion? Member Welty.
Yeah, I'd like to withhold 1A4.
Oops. Any others? Member Johnston.
1A1 and 1A2.
Members Seligapunko.
I'm just 1A3.
1A3?
Yeah.
Okay. Any others? Okay. Member Welty, why don't we start with you? You're the first.
But maybe we should take these in order.
That's fine. All right. Member Johnston, 1A1.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to talk a little bit about, it was an excellent demonstration we had. And I particularly want to thank Deb Hanu, our art teacher in Ordinist Middle School. She was part of that presentation. And I don't think she's ever been recognized before publicly, but she had an article here last month in the Minnesota School Board Association Magazine, which was excellent, and just wanted to publicly acknowledge that and thank her for that. Some of the other stuff that that was talked about, and was going to throw out really quick, it was about the importance of art education. They talked about things like judgment, self-direction, creativity, and risk-taking. A lot of times, we relate these two things other than art. But it was very clear, coming from an art family myself and also a STEM person as a career, that those things are shared by all the, all the, all we do in education. And Deb has been sending a lot of stuff to us where she has turned STEM into STEAM, which is STEM, which is science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And she had the art to that. So, I thought it was a very, very good presentation. I just wanted to thank Deborah as well as Jeremy for that excellent presentation.
I'm sorry. 1A2?
Sure, just, we had a good discussion on that. We're adding extra credits there slowly as the year goes. So, I want to thank the Superintendent and Dr. Carey for the, for that, that presentation. One of the things that I wanted to throw out, which which we had had a lot of talk about, and if any of the public hears this, I think it's, was new to me is that we talked about, can we get all these in? And we talked a little bit about seventh hour. And that happened long before I was on the board. But I think it's something that I would certainly like to see future discussions on that. Can we get more credits? Can we get more classes? Can we, can we eliminate, can we, is that, is that a potential answer to some of our curriculum issues that that we hear about a lot? So, I just wanted to say that I hope that the Superintendent can go forward and maybe even have more discussion on that. I know it's a tough thing. I don't know a lot about the pros and cons. But it would certainly be worthwhile for having further discussion on that. So, I want to thank Member Westholm for bringing that up and also for having further discussion on that.
You remind me of the time when we had a very active seventh period in all our high schools. And a previous superintendent, many, many years ago, went up to one group that was just doing so much. And he said, you're costing us money. I hate that. Yeah, but they're doing so well. And the seventh hour is is a sticky wicket because there's a little extra money involved in having seventh period, but seventh periods do so much. Member Welty on that topic?
Yes. I I would be interested if if the administration could put together some. Financially, I think this is a long ways off. But I I'm wondering if we could have some cost estimates of the seventh hour as it might be configured in a number of different sorts of ways, from from stripped down to to a little more, more abundant curriculum. It would be nice to work that way, and I have a feeling that the public might be quite intrigued if it, if it, if we approached them with the possibility of funding it with their help. So, I I'd be very interested in some cost, cost estimates of something along those lines.
Superintendent Grandseth.
The seventh-period day is something that we have discussed in past budget cycles. And we can certainly include that piece again as we go into the budget cycle. For for this year, we can look at it as a, as a consideration. I know that in the past, it has been a considerable investment, but certainly something that we can put a number on and discuss.
Thank you. 1A3, Members Seligapunko.
Right. I I just wanted to address that really quick, Chair Murnicki. Just when you talk about seventh-period day, I'm totally behind that, though I do think we need to look at the middle schools. Because one of the things that we have lost in our middle schools is that versatility and trying new things with that age group. I think the high school, I I wholeheartedly have been advocating for seventh-period ever since they got rid of it. But I think what we've really lost is not having a seventh-period in the middle schools because they really have lost trying new experiences at that age. And I would, I personally would, if I had to choose between the two of them, I would rather have a seventh-period day in the middle schools. I would love it for both. And I I think that is something that we should be looking at if we do receive more money from the legislature, which could happen. Never say never. But honestly, I think it'd be really important because our middle schools have been suffering. We've eliminated a lot of those choices of kids to just experience different areas. So, I, for one, would like to see that maybe on a budget talk.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want me to just move on?
1A3.
And I apologize for missing last week. I was down at State with my swimmers. But I have a question about the FabLab. Just, is there a special licensure for staff for that? Or, I mean, are we going to have a hard time having a staff person teach the FabLab? Or is there a special, or is it just science, or just math, or just, I'm curious?
We currently have a instructor hired for purposes of the FabLab course. And so, at this point, that person, part of their FTE, is to make the arrangements and coordinate what the program will look like for future years. And so, we're putting it in the course catalog at this point, pending the finalization of what that course will look like and presentation of that to the board.
Can I ask, what is the, what is the actual licensure for it? I mean, because it's fairly new.
Technical.
I'd have to look it up, but I believe it's, you know, a CTE, Industrial Tech licensure.
And and I'm sorry if I, can I ask something? I I thought in Industrial Tech, is that difficult to hire? It seems like we've been struggling.
There are a number of licensures that have become more difficult to hire in recent years, and Industrial Tech is certainly one of those.
Okay, thank you.
I have the pleasure of riding with Principal Sconyers down to Hinckley and back for meetings. And it's, if you've ever spent two hours in a car with Principal Sconyers, you're not supposed to laugh at that. And we are very excited about the FabLab. And one of the things we talked about when we were going down there is those kids coming out of that FabLab are going to make more money than the principal are when they, when they come. Remember that, Tanya? They're going to do very well. And and we are very, very excited about adding this. It sure helped to get that check from QuickTrip, also to help us move around on that. Okay, Member Welty. Whoops, I'm sorry. Member Grandseth, Grandseth had something.
And I, I'd hit it just to say that we can certainly include seven-period day information at both levels and what the financial investments would be at those and look at some of the pros and cons of that. I know that in the past, some of that conversation has also included the possibility of block scheduling, which could offer some of the same opportunities with less financial investments. So, there's a number of things that we could look at. And Chair Murnicki, I agree, traveling with Principal Sconyers can be educational.
Well, I can, I can certainly attest to that last statement that the meeting with Principal Sconyers is always entertaining, invigorating, and illuminating. I'm marking that, making comment about, making a note about the the block scheduling you were talking about. So many things for us to talk about. We did have a a good discussion at the Education Committee about about student transfers. We're taking a look at some possible changes, and the News Tribune did a nice job with its coverage of the implications there. At the end of our meeting, I'd like to talk about all the people who will not be be hearing this tonight because they don't know where we are on television, because we've changed channels. And I think we need to advertise that we're on 187, which those of you watching this tonight who know that don't have a problem, but all the people who wonder where we went do. Couple of things that I wanted to just say about, just to mention in in terms of the student transfer issue, which has been on a lot of people's minds. I took over, apparently, from from Mr. Westholm, who was formerly on the Appeals Committee. And I think I read in the News Tribune numbers that sounded about right to me, which we had twenty appeals of turned-down transfer requests. And I think that our transfer committee being being soft, targeted about fourteen of those. Or if if those aren't the exact numbers, they were pretty close. In case anyone hadn't heard, I think we had agreed that we would grandfather those children who have been transferred in in previous years. There's no fear that their family should have that they would be sent back to the schools that they transferred from. I guess I would describe the regulation that we're currently contemplating as a break of sorts, trying to just slow down transfers a little bit. The principal consideration being how many students would be in different sections in the in the schools they would transfer to. I don't personally anticipate that there would be a lot of students who would be denied a chance to transfer because the classrooms are too great. But I guess we will find out in the spring when when that that takes place. And the other thing that I would mention is, we had a little discussion about the transfers not always being one-way. I think a lot of us in in Duluth think that those transfers always go in a directional way, always from west to east. But I know that when I was on the school board a long time ago, the principal at at Central was always very proud because, in fact, more kids moved, transferred from 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 east to central than the other way around. And there's still plenty of that going on with some students just finding their niche in different directions, oftentimes west as well as east. So, those are the only comments that I had to make unless somebody wants to add something else or ask any questions.
Member Harlan.
I just, so they will be grandfathered in for their current school, but students that would move from an elementary to a middle school for for transfer, if they're, if it's, they were, if they live in the neighborhood to go to, they'll have to go to their their home district school. Maybe Superintendent, that was one piece that.
Superintendent Grandseth.
That's right. And that's, that's not necessarily a new piece. But when you're transferred into an elementary, then if you wanted to go to a different middle school than would be your home middle school, you would need to reapply. And that's true from going from middle school to high school as well.
Member Johnston.
Yeah, question, we didn't ask, talk about this at the committee, but something that piqued my interest is, will this have any, or just a question of the Superintendent, do you think this is going to have any long-term impact on lessening the disparity of enrollment between Denfeld and East High School?
Superintendent Grandseth.
Transfers, while, okay. It's true that there are about seventeen hundred kids at East and about a thousand kids at Denfeld. But the number of transfers between the schools really isn't the cause of the differences in those numbers. There are kids that, as Member Welty said, there are kids that go from east to west and kids that go from west to east, depending on what works for for their families or for for themselves. You know, I think that that's a part of the conversation that we need to have as a community. I think there's a lot of different reasons for the numbers in both of those areas. But the number one reason for the difference is there are more kids that live in the eastern end of the town than the western end of the town. And that boundary is already at Sixth Avenue East and, well, kind of across the hills, skyline, and and up. But certainly, that can be something that we look at as we receive the demographic information that should be coming relatively soon and give us some data to look at. But I I really don't, while this may help a little tiny bit, I don't think it's the number one cause of those disparities.
Member Laffler Kemp.
Yeah, I just wanted to add the, I really also appreciated the article the Duluth News Tribune did on the transfer policy. It might be helpful for the public also to know that the Transfer Appeal Board is made up of one school board member, a district administrator, other than the assistant superintendent, two community members, keeping in mind the need to maintain a balance of representation across the district. And also that the principal will be consulted by the Transfer Appeal Board before approval as well. So, there's a lot of discussion with a lot of the stake, the stakeholders helping to make that decision as well, so.
Thank you. It's been moved by Member Harlan, seconded by Member Laffler Kemp to approve the education, I'm sorry. Mr. Crawford, you want to hit your light? Hit the button. And, did you hit it down? Oh, there we go. Mr. Crawford, Assistant Superintendent Crawford.
I wanted to make a couple of comments. First of all, I wanted to clarify that this transfer policy is, is strict. First of all, I wanted to clarify that this transfer policy is, is strictly addressing internal transfer, as opposed to open enrollment, an open enrollment or outside district coming into our district. So, I wanted to clarify that, that point. Also, wanted to bring your attention to some additions that were made, and I think that the updated copy was sent to you. For some reason, I omitted grades five, so we added grades four, five, and fifth grade at 28th as well.
Thank you. It's been moved by Member Harla, seconded by Member Loeffler Kemp. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? That passes 7-0. We now move to Mr. Welty, Member Welty in the Human Resources Report. Member Welty.
Thank you, Chair Murneke. I, I should point out that, that Mr. Crawford was, was gone, and our new curriculum director, Mr. Carey, did an admirable job in his place, carrying on and, and leading the Education Committee where we had questions. And I will say, as I have been saying at most of our meetings in, in recent months, that once again, Human Resources Committee, which used to meet for such a brief time in the old days when I was on the school board, has once again taken its place as one of the longer meetings. We had about an hour session, and I'm sure that we will get through this much more quickly tonight than we did on Wednesday. I will start with the staffing report items, going very quickly through that. We had six total certified appointments, one certified long-term sum, two certified permanent increases, one certified temporary decrease, four certified temporary increases, one certified leave, one certified retirement, 25 non-certified appointments, four non-certified demotions, one non-certified leave, two non-certified long-term subs, one non-certified permanent decrease, six non-certified permanent increases, four non-certified promotions, 10 non-certified reclassifications, and we were given a hearty thank you. If we end up approving this, that, that hearty thank you will, will hold permanent. We had one non-certified resignation, one non-certified termination, and nine non-certified temporary increases. And I'm going to add strictly gratuitously that every time I've ever been to a school board meeting for the past 20 years, whoever is the chair has to rattle through all of these things. And I don't know if there's any, any statutory requirement that we mention all of these changes, and I can only guess that those people, they're, they're, the chairman is nodding his head that there's a statutory requirement that these be mentioned.
No, we just do this to punish you.
Well, as, as, as much of a shrinking violet as I am, it's not perhaps the most effective punishment, Chair Murneke. Anyway, those were the only, only, those were the main items that we discussed. There were two informational items, which I will just point out. We had a, a discussion related to an, an email that I received from a, a, a board member of the past, Mr. Rich Paulson, who asked a number of questions about the teacher's contract, and they all seemed to have been satisfactorily answered. Has anyone, by the way, forwarded those responses to Mr. Paulson? If not, I'll, I'll be happy to, to track them down, although I put some, some handwritten notes on them, which might make it difficult for my, my computer to decipher before I send them on. And there was also a discussion of the review process having to do with the superintendent's evaluation by the school board. And it was decided that this will be revisited at the December meeting. Essentially, this followed a long conversation, a very good conversation that we had at the last school board meeting, and then at the HR committee meeting on Wednesday, we had another good discussion. We, we had some thoughts about whether the particular evaluation form, which, by the way, the board members are to turn in this evening and hand in to Mr. Sworowski, was satisfactory. Some of us had not had a hand in, in developing it. And it, it's been discussed, or it's been, I think the consensus has been during discussions that perhaps we ought to have a, a committee in December to get down and do some thinking about whether we would like to make some alterations, or improvements, or enhancements, or something that more closely fits this board's personality in terms of an evaluation for future years. And I, I did make the observation that we had, had talked about a committee to, to make a change in terms of communications, and somehow that committee never got started. So, I know I, for one, would be a little concerned that we would decide to have a committee, and somehow it never got started. But, Mr. Chair, perhaps I could ask you, I, I don't know that we discussed, and I'm not positive what our policy says on, on setting up an ad hoc committee like this. Is this the sort of a committee that you would be comfortable, if people were to volunteer to sit down and, and volunteer to, to, to become that committee at some point in next, next month or so, and, and bring back recommendations to the board, or suggestions, or continue this discussion?
You're talking about the superintendent's review?
Yes, having, having some kind of a committee of the school board get together and, and throw out, look for solutions from other board members about what things we might want to include on a superintendent's evaluation.
We, we put that on the agenda, and of course, a snowstorm interrupted it, and we had to pare, pare down, and we're planning on just having that discussion at the HR December meeting.
Okay. Would you like to have a, a committee of any?
The HR committee would, will be the one that will discuss it.
Okay. Can you imagine the HR committee having a, I mean, HR is always happy to meet for an hour, but perhaps a smaller group of people could come up with some suggestions, and we could bring it so that HR might get down to a half an hour, or even 15 minutes at some point in the future?
What, and I, I discussed this with some other people earlier. What, what I'm going to do tomorrow, I was going to do this, is, I was going to wait till this meeting was over, is send out a, a note to all board members that now that we've done this review, we can take a look at it and bring any suggestions for change to the HR meeting.
Okay, very good. Well, I'm satisfied with that.
Good.
I don't know if anybody else has a comment.
Are you moving?
Well, there's, there's, I, I don't think there's a, a motion to, to move at this point. I, I'm quite willing to accept this, this is just general consensus.
No, 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 the, the report.
Oh, the report, yes. There were no future HR items at this time, so, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would like to move the adoption of our Human Resources Committee meeting of November 18th, 2014.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Members Slega Ponkel. Member Johnston?
Sure would like to have a discussion on 3A and 3B.
Any others? Okay, Member Johnston.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I'm going to read a statement, Mr. Chair. At the regular school board meeting on October 21st, the superintendent's human resource director publicly insulted and publicly ridiculed my partner, my spouse, a person that I love deeply.
Member Johnston, I'm going to have to, Member Johnson. Member Johnson, just for a second, if you would, please. Member Johnston, if you would.
In addition to being unprofessional, these statements were unprecedented, and they will fully, and intentionally discuss private personal data and are a violation of Minnesota Government Data Practices Act.
Rule this out of order.
His remarks were wirelessly reported in the media. People that heard these remarks were appalled.
Oh, you're out of order.
I have asked the superintendent for an apology for the behavior of his employee. I have asked the superintendent what he plans on doing about such behavior by an employee of the school district. I have heard nothing. I find it very difficult to sit in this meeting with someone who has expressed such disdain, ridicule, and prejudice toward Jane. I am in protest of foreneglect of the superintendent to take any action to curb such base behavior by his employee.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Go ahead and ask, we're not going to have it. All right, we, we had our vote. Are you opposed?
Discussion on 3A and 3B, and you said we were going to have that.
I thought you were done. You, you were out of order. You weren't discussing 3A and 3B.
I made a statement in protest that I'm having me sitting here with a person who has insulted and ridiculed publicly my spouse.
Again, now we go back to the same thing. Do you want to discuss?
I'll be making that statement every time I have to be sitting in the room with Mr. Sworowski.
Do you want to discuss 3A or 3B?
Yes, I do.
Okay, good. Let's discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There was a discussion on the, on the teacher, or the Duluth Federation Teachers Contract. There was some good discussion on that. Also, a part of that discussion, we talked about other contracts that are ongoing. We had quite a lengthy discussion on that. And, you know, I brought up the fact, and I think it's very important, that we have about 11 collective bargaining agreements, yet we only have had one, one, one that's been approved. Other, the other 10 are outstanding. In fact, I added up their 17 months past when they expired. When I look back, when we passed this again back in 2012, they were, it had only expired by nine months. So, we have, we're, instead of getting better at getting our collective bargaining agreements signed and passed by the school board, we've even gotten worse. In fact, if it continues on now, it looks like it's probably going to be probably close to 20 months beyond. We have, we've had, this is a two-year contract. Obviously, it has to be a two-year contract, because if we only did a one-year contract, it would have been expired before we even started negotiating it. I think that, that we have to do better at getting our contracts together. There's also a statement made by the Human Resource Director that there was no issues. Obviously, the speakers last month said that there was issues. They're very important issues. And, you know, I have made the request that the school board be informed of issues if there are any. Instead, we've been given absolutely nothing. In fact, we were told there's absolutely no issues at all. If there is no issues on our collective bargaining agreements and, and getting them updated, they should be done, that should be done. I think that some of the, one of the things that, by delaying so long, originally, we were talking about, there were some parameters. One of the things was raising from .5 to .6. It was going to save us, I forget, $150,000 or something. Now, since this has been so long, obviously, there's going to be no savings at all, because by the time these get approved, they have to be post-dated, so there isn't going to be any savings, even if we wanted them that, because it's going to be almost expired by the time. So, all those things that were in place have to continue. So, they were, everybody that was at, at .5 will still get it. So, that's another reason why we should be updating our, our policies in a timely manner, is so if we decide that we want to do something to, for example, save money, or make some change in the conditions, like staff development, we're negotiating something which is already 18 months past due. And we're negotiating something which is, we can't even negotiate, because the status quo has to continue. And when we're 18 to 24 months past it, the status quo will continue. And no matter what we negotiate, will not make any impact. So, I think it's very important. I think the, the school board has to do due diligence. We've not been doing due diligence getting these done, and I'm very surprised. Why? We passed the, in April, we passed the teachers' contract. That was, that was good. We were told at the time, this was a rushed thing to do. We had to get it done in one day, because, so all, everybody could know what was going on. And we were told that we couldn't even renegotiate the, the, the policy 9045, because, because, well, this is all, everything is all done, so let's just go forward. Well, it turns out that eight months after that, we still haven't finished off in the negotiations. And as a board member, I think that we have to do our due diligence on that. And I'm certainly asking the, the superintendent to speed up this process and try to, in the future, get this back on track, so things are not 18 months behind cycle.
Okay. A couple of things. We just talked earlier to Mr. Sworowski, and we will be, scheduled an update. We're going to be having a meeting, along with a meeting about some property, potential property sales, and the, we will get an update with the other bargaining units on what's happening. I've been in a district a long time, and I remember being a member of the Teachers' Bargaining Unit, and we worked well into the school year, the following school year, without a contract. And this is before Superintendent Grandseth, and Mr. Hanson, and Mr. Sworowski, a long time ago, that in negotiations, and if you look, steelworkers, or Afsmi, or whatever, you will find in certain areas, at certain times, the negotiations take longer than other areas. And that's simply what it is, is there, there are some issues, and we will be getting an update on that. Member Harla.
I just want to be clear that the, the cost that was a .5 to a .6 for that savings, these are Me Too contracts, and so, they move along with that. That, we had a discussion about that at the board meeting, at the committee meeting last week, so just wanted to make that clear.
One more thing, Member Welty. The letter from Mr. Paulson was sent to you, if you remember, and then you, you forwarded to us. And so, if you could, that'd be good. All in favor of adopting the HR report signify by saying aye. Oh, I'm sorry, Member Johnston, you're, I, all right?
3B. Okay. Again, we had a good discussion, and I think that it's very important to go through with that. I'm glad to hear there's some discussion that's going to be done at the meeting. The, the problem with settling this at a, a committee meeting is that this, we're going to have to, there's going to be, have to be some composition done. This can't be done at a committee meeting, because it's going to take writing, and a little bit of thought, and that. And that's why Mr. Welty's idea, I think, was a good idea, because I think it's important that the school board be proactive in writing this. And, and I don't, we can't do that at a committee meeting. Somebody has to be assigned that, okay, someone's going to make a first stab at this. And that can't be done at committee meetings, and I think that was a point of Mr. Welty. How this is done, I certainly don't care. All I know that we can't do it at a committee meeting. And I certainly would like to be proactive in some of that. Some of the things I've mentioned, which I want to say publicly again, is that I think that this is important to have this, have a, a evaluation process be somewhat data-driven. And data-driven is the best way to do that, and I think the intent of it is to use a continuous improvement plan that the superintendent had presented to the board here a year ago. I'd like to see those parameters incorporated into a new evaluation procedure. I think that is something which I think was the intent, if I recall, when the superintendent did this, and I think, you know, I certainly agree with that. So, again, I'm hoping that we can somehow incorporate some of those ideas.
School boards share ideas. We will meet in December. We'll meet in the HR meeting. I'll ask the board members to look at the instrument. There's plenty of opportunity in the current instrument to both praise the superintendent and to rip the superintendent. There's plenty of opportunities. There's lots of questions, you can go one way or the other on. What we can do is bring examples of what you'd like included in the new evaluation, and we can discuss it as a school board. Member Welty.
I appreciate Member Johnston's kind of seconding my concerns. I do agree with you, Chairman, that the, the instrument, having used it today, having spent several hours working on it, does give a school board member plenty of scope to make observations that they can pass on to the superintendent for the superintendent's use and edification. If, I, I guess, I was just going to make this observation, if- use and edification. Um, uh, if, I guess, I was just gonna make this observation. If, if I can get myself organized as the, uh, as the Thanksgiving and Christmas season grinds on and, and does its best to distract me, um, I hope I can come up with some suggestions and perhaps email them out, and we can have a, a, a chance to have board members take a look at some of those ideas and exchange some ideas through the email system that we might put together. Although, now that I've said that, I, I, I guess I'm getting concerned about the question about whether or not that's in defiance of the open meeting law. Um, perhaps if, 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 if any of us just send something to the whole group, uh, it, it can get our juices flowing, and, and we can bring them to, uh, the, uh, the HR Committee Meeting, and, uh, print them out and persuade people that we're not trying to do anything undercover. We're just trying to get our heads together to figure out how to competently and wisely evaluate Superintendents in future years.
We, I think we can do it. Member Harla?
Not to belabor this point, but the Minnesota School Board Association Conference in January is going to have some sessions on the Superintendent Evaluation, and I would wonder if, if members of the board, um, I, I'm interested in the process from start to finish, from when it's emailed, from providing written feedback, and then through the discussion of the board. Guessing that the Superintendent's contract will happen, or, not contract, evaluation will, will have more of a discussion in December, I would wonder if the Chair or members of the board would be willing to advance that, either to make sure that it's on the schedule for January or for February, so we can have, go through the whole process, and then also get some feedback from other districts at that MSBA gathering. I also know that it's good to start out the year with some expectations to Superintendent, and so, um, just a, a question about that, to make sure we have as much information as we can moving forward.
We can do this. We can, you know, again, we're a board of educated people. What we can do is we can do some preliminary work. We can say, you know, maybe this needs work, maybe we should tweak this. We can do some talking. We can go down to the school board meeting, down, uh, the Minnesota School Board Association Meeting, and go to the workshops and come back and say, you know, this might work and that might work, and we can put together an instrument. I think we can do this. Member Welty?
I'm just gonna say that I, I think that, that Member Harla has a good idea. I don't know that I'm in any rush. I think the most important thing is that whatever we come up with, we're satisfied that we've put some thought into it. Uh, and it probably doesn't have to be all wrapped up in December, when we're still looking and considering the, uh, the results of this year's evaluation.
Mr. Sworfsky?
Superintendent Gronseth is probably gonna say the same thing I am. I just wanna remind the board also that the Superintendent's review form and format is mutually agreeable between the Superintendent and the board.
Thank you. Superintendent Gronseth?
Not what I was gonna say, but thank you.
[laughing]
Um, I was going to kind of take a little, um, bird walk and say, uh, speaking of the, uh, MSBA conference that's coming up, if you, uh, plan on going and haven't, uh, let Mrs. Tellerico know, please do so, that, so that she can make arrangements for you.
Okay. All in favor of the HR report, say aye?
Aye.
Posed 7-0. We now turn to Member Laffler Kemp for the business report.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Murneke, and, um, I also will just start out by saying, we had a lot of questions at our, um, last Wednesday's meeting, hour-long meeting, and, um, I'm hoping we can, uh, get through the Business Committee meeting quickly, because it is my son's 20th birthday, and we have to have cake yet when I get home. Um, but, uh, wanna start out with, uh, mentioning, in your packet tonight was, um, a memorandum with, um, answers to some of the questions for the, uh, that we had when we get to the, uh, vendor, uh, update. So, I just wanna make sure you, you saw that in the green, uh, folder. Um, I, I move, uh, the Business Committee, uh, report, um, uh, starting with the financial report on page three. Uh, on, uh, the, the extra page I mentioned to you is approval of the payment of claims. Uh, and, uh, again, there were a number of questions at the Business Committee meeting, and your, the answers are there. Um, page, uh, 16 is budget revisions. There's four items on page 16. Uh, D, wire transfers, uh, on page 18. Um, E, investment transactions, uh, on page 19, and, uh, F, WADAM projections, page 20, and then fundraisers, um, on page 21. There were no bids, RFPs, or quote reports, no policies and regulations, no contracts, change orders, and leases. Uh, we have our resolution, and would you like me to?
Please, let's read the resolution and vote on that separately.
Okay, so that's on page 22, and it's Resolution B11143211, and I move this resolution, acceptance of donations to Duluth Public Schools, whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 requires the school district to accept donations by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full, and whereas acceptance of the donations in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools, now therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below-described donations from said organizations in accordance with the terms set forth within. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various organizations. And there's a long list, um-
You don't have to read those.
I, I'm not. I just wanted to acknowledge Supporting Cogdon School, Lakewood, and many supporting Denfeld, and also Myers Wilkins.
Second, I, Member Harla. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Posed 7-0. Continue, please.
Okay, and then on, um, under informational, um, page 23 is expenditure contracts. Um, page 1, uh, 112, um, uh, other contracts that the Superintendent Gronseth or the Directive Business and Finance has signed. And then on page 123, Facilities Management and Capital Project Status Report. Uh, page 128, change orders, uh, and 129, uh, the discussion, um, presentation by Superintendent Gronseth on decision-making here in the school district. And thank you again, Superintendent Gronseth, for the handout and the presentation, and just clarifying a lot of roles, uh, as well. And then, again, future items, uh, the financial audit, Walden Hills lease agreement, Voyager's bus company contract, and cash flow borrowing. Again, I move, uh, the Business Committee report.
Seconded by Member Harla. Member Johnston?
Are we withdrawing stuff for discussion?
Yep.
Okay, 1B.
1B.
Uh, separate vote on 1G.
G?
G.
Separate vote on the fundraisers?
Right.
All right.
Uh, discussion on, uh, 3, and discussion on 6D and 6F.
We don't have anything for 3.
All right, all right. Um, start with 1B, Member Johnston. Oh, I'm sorry, wait. Uh, Member Laffler Kemp, did you have another one? Anything else to poll?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. Member Johnston?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, again, we had a lot of discussion on some of the issues on the vendor checklist, and I found a couple of other ones that I wanted to, that I had the questions of. First, I wanna thank Mr. Leiter, called me up, and the question about CO2 was a change order number two, so thank you, Mr. Leiter, for having that. Ended up having a good discussion about carbon dioxide anyway, but it was a good discussion, so thank you again for, um, informing me on what that was. I have a dis, concern on page 11. Uh, this is a legal cost on dryer, um, Knutson. I have a concern about some of the, uh, I guess a concern about the bedside manners of that firm and over, uh, people that talk to me. And, um, I can talk to the Superintendent about that in the future, but I do have a concern about their activity. Uh... The other, uh, issue that I would like to bring up, where there is, I noticed that there is, back on page 36, there's, uh, invoices from a Riverview Law Office, PLLC. And I just noticed that, and I'm just wondering what that was, and in fact, going on page 36.
Okay, um, do you wanna have Mr.?
Sure, sure.
Mr. LeBlanc answer?
Sure.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Uh, that's through our payroll, so the chances are, um, that is a garnishment on an employee.
Okay, because I know it's been going on for about three years, running about 3,000 a year. That's probably what that is then. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. That's a good, to know that it wasn't another law firm that I didn't know anything about, so that's good. I am going to ask again, and we didn't have a real discussion. We have a $22,000 bill from, uh, Kevin Rupp. This is on page 37. And the discussion was, is that did not include the Mary Rice bills at all. There was some discussion about that. Maybe that was, had to do with some of the negotiations. That didn't seem to be very typical, since the bill was so large. So, any other ideas on what that, um, bill might be for?
I'm sorry. Mr. Hanson?
Uh, just to clarify, that it is, uh, three bills actually for three months. Um, and, uh, I don't have the detail in front of me, so, but it is for a longer time than, uh, what was discussed at the committee meeting, uh, and it does represent three months of expenses.
You have the floor.
Oh, okay. I'll just pass over to Mr. Welty here, and I'll take it back.
Member Welty?
Thank you. Uh, I, um, I would just request a chance to, to take a look at the, the billing from, uh, from the attorneys, if, uh, if that could be provided.
Member Johnston?
Uh, yeah, I'd also like to take a look at those billings, too. Uh, I went back for, for a few years, and looking at our legal bills. And, again, my assumption, I could be wrong, hopefully that I'm wrong, on that this $22,000 has nothing to do with the board and the Superintendent going after me, but I suspect it has something to do with it. I looked back on, uh, some of the bills. We've had about $88,000 in legal bills this year. In the past, we've went up to like over $100,000, but most of those have been related to red plan issues, like, for example, uh, property purchasing and, uh, bonding, uh, writing, and those are all fairly expensive. Uh, the only other two big bills that I could, again, since we don't have any real record here what they are, but back when we, um, changed the basketball coaches, that was a bill, again, from, uh, Mr. Rupp for about $38,000. Looked like it was in that span of the timeframe. Again, since nobody gives us these invoices, we don't know, but it appears to be something like that. Uh, when we, we, we got a new Superintendent, uh, Vice Ivy Foster, like, we had bills of about $21,000 at that point. Again, Kevin Rupp was the one that did all, all those. And then again, now, we have a $22,000 bill, and of course, this is just a one of three months, and we've got at least three months to go. We have a long ways to go yet before any of these, uh, final bills are done. So, again, it's very important that we, as a board, look at, um, uh, what these bills are for. And I think the bills are way high. I think that we're emphasizing too much legal action, not enough civility, not enough team building, and not enough trying to find some resolutions sort of, uh, legal issues. Uh, one of the things that I, I'm requesting also is that, was, at least was told to us that the Mary Rice, who happens to be the investigator on, on, on me and my allegations by the Superintendent of assault, uh, is that they, none of these have came in yet. Is that correct? Is, has there been, uh, her, her investigations going on now since June? Has there any invoices from her yet?
District has not received any invoices, uh, regarding the investigation, though.
And we did ask, and just a clarification, will we be getting bills from Mary Rice, or will be, will they be going through Kevin Rupp's firm?
Uh, the, uh, I would expect the invoices to come directly to us. That's the arrangement.
Okay. Again, I'm concerned that we have these bills. I'm, I'm concerned that, uh, I'm sort of, sort of, I'm concerned about the report. All the school board members have seen it, nobody else has yet. Uh, my lawyer, when he seen it, he laughed at it. I think that we, as a board, have to be really critical. Did Mary Rice fulfill her contract or not? I don't think she did. I think that she breached her contract. I think we should be looking at that and making sure that if she's gonna get paid, that she complied with the, what the contract was. At this point, I don't think she did. And until, of course, we don't have any contract, and we don't have any invoices, so I'm asking for con, the contracts with her. And, uh, again, the same person is already involved. All you gotta do is look it up in, you know, on the web. She's involved in litigation based on other investigations that she's done. Uh, and again, questioning about the veracity of her investigation, which is obvious there.
Member Johnston, um, you're asking about claims. Now, it's obvious how you feel about the report, but let's, let's just ask questions about the claims. Where is this coming? When, when, when will it come? To the best of our knowledge, let's not make any, um, judgments on the claims, please.
Sure. My point is that when, when, once we get these claims, it's too late to question them. So, my point here is to, if I beg the Chair to give me a minute, is that when we get these claims from her, invoices from her, that we be given the claims as well as the contract. So, we, as a board, can look at, did she do her job, or, or is she, has she, um, in violation of her contract?
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I had to say.
Member Sligapunko?
Thank you. Um, you know, Chair Murneke, it sounds to me like Member Johnston is wanting us to hire a, um, a full-time contingency of staff members that are lawyers. Um, I do know the city, um, employs full-time with benefits over 10 lawyers, just be part of the staff. And I know the county, it's like 100, um, staff members that are attorneys. So, maybe, it sounds to me like Member Johnston is suggesting that we do that, and then we would not see any costs of any of this, because they'd be full-time staff. Um, so I'm assuming that actually hiring, contracting out legal advice is many times, um, less expensive than having staff members. And then we can, um, be a little bit more focused when we do hire, contract out for attorneys, and they specialize. So, I would much rather do it the way that we are doing it, um, instead of hiring a full staff of attorneys to be part of the school district, um, employees.
Member Laffler Kemp?
Yeah, I just wanna clarify. We're on Item B, approval of payment of claims, and, um, just for the public's knowledge, uh, every month, we get a list of all of the vendors that we're, uh, we're paying money out to. This month, it was 46 pages. Um, there were a number of questions, again, that were raised, as they are at each, uh, uh, committee meeting, and, um, uh, the sheet that I referred to earlier answered some of the questions that didn't get answered at the meeting. Um, I think, uh, at our regular business meeting, this section is what takes up a lot of the time, which is great. Lots of- of the time, which is great, lots of answers, uh, or questions get answered, so I just wanted to kind of bring people back to what we're talking about, thank you.
I hearken back to the wisdom of Paul Manning. Let's stick to the discussion of the claims that are before us. Member Johnston?
Sure, I'd just like to respond really quick to, uh, Member Sligapunko, she assumed things, I mean, first people shouldn't assume things, I certainly don't mind her assuming it, but it would be a little more polite to, uh, ask me before she assumed. First of all, no, I'm not asking that we hire lawyers, in fact, just the opposite, I'm asking that, uh, the superintendent and this board has no need to hire lawyers, instead, working together as we talk about civility and, uh, behavior and anti-harassment, we should be doing that. We don't, we have no need for lawyers, the need for lawyers has come about by this action, and, uh, so we have no need for lawyers, we have no need for these expenses whatsoever.
Member Welty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, while we're talking about payment of claims, I, I just want to thank the, I want to thank Mr. LeBlanc. Um, I did ask about a number of these, and we've, for a couple of months now, we've been getting the, the lists, which is how I remember it from the old days when I was on the board, and I also want to thank you for doing it because I asked about all the things that you have clarified where the expenses went to, but I, I did not have the, uh, the organization to, to keep track of it, so I'm glad you did and got back to me, and I thank you for that, and, and hopefully that will be a regular feature of our business committee meetings in the future.
Member Johnston, um, a separate vote on one G, please. Go ahead, oops, what happened there? Here we go.
A no discussion, just a vote, I don't have no discussion, somebody else may, but...
All right, um, separate vote on the fundraiser, uh, I don't, yep, yeah, uh, no discussion, and I think I can just go with the move and second by Loeffler Kemp and second by Harla on that, if I'm not mistaken, so all in favor of accepting the fundraiser, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes seven, nothing. Member Johnston, policies and regulations, number one, um, three.
There's nothing there.
Right, well, he, he wants to talk, so here we go.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, again, I appreciate you putting, uh, one of my agenda items on, that's much appreciated. Uh, one of, one of the other items which, which I've asked about, uh, frequently, and this time I did submit it, and was about getting few, getting agenda items on, and you mentioned that this would be done in the future, so I'm just wondering if you could give me some idea of what that, what, what do you think that, uh, future timeline looks like?
I don't have an idea right now. Okay, uh, we go to, I lost, six D, Member Johnston?
Sure, this was, uh, we got a, got a report from Mr. Leiter at the committee, and I didn't get a chance to read it, of course, till I got home, and I mentioned, and I've since seen an article in the paper about some damage done to secondary technical campus and Central High School, and since I didn't really know what that was, I'm just wondering if Mr. Leiter could give us a few more details, what happened, uh, is any, how much damage was a result, uh, was this, uh, this, I didn't really understand from the paper or from your report.
Member Leiter, uh, Mr. Leiter?
Member Johnston, members of the board, there, um, the newspaper did a good job, um, I think summarizing, and I think the picture also helps to explain the extent of damage. At the S T C, um, we had some theft, vandalism, call it what you may, I think it's both, in that they, uh, they were able to access a roof, um, and there is some details about that, that we're, we're still not communicating because it's part of an investigation. Um, police were, were called, we had investigation, um, the damage to some of the rooftop units, um, involving, uh, copper wire and copper tubing, and, um, damage to the roof due to the process of that theft, um, all resulted in the need to replace several large air-handling, um, cooling units in order to maintain the systems associated with that building. Lower deductible for insurance, um, so we have proceeded and have, as of today, I think, completed the installation, and we're in the, in the process of starting up those units in order to maintain our systems in that building. The other, um, incident of damage involved some minors and one adult, uh, that were able to break into our building, the Central High School building, and, um, uh, were caught by the police. Unfortunately, something that they did in the building wasn't discovered until, um, about forty-eight hours later, and that involved some running of some water. There, there was some damage, but the extent of it, uh, wasn't as great as it could have been as, I think it has been in other buildings where similar type incidents occurred. Um, so we're still kind of evaluating that, and it'll really depend on where we are with, um, a future buyer of that property and whether or not, um, there's any need to negotiate repairs associated with that.
Thank you, Member Harla.
I have a, something on the, the rest of the report, did you guys have a comment on this piece, or?
You're next in line.
Um, I just, I wanted to make it, make it clear, I, I hope that the students that were a part of, the E students that were so excited about the, them winning the game, I just wanted to com, commend the staff for standing there trying to hold them back. A guest and I were stuck in the middle of the students, as they were rushing forward, so, um, just an encouragement for school staff to make sure that they talk about celebrations at the time, and I, it was not the majority of students at the game, it was not all students at, at either of the schools, it was a handful of students that were pretty, pretty disrespectful, so I appreciate whatever you're doing to move forward with that, and for the staff that were present to try to mitigate the response.
Thank you, Member Loeffler Kemp?
Yeah, I just, in terms of this report, I, I, I did want to point out one thing too, that, um, on the second page about the environmental health and safety training that took place, and I'm always, I find that, uh, very interesting, and so I just wanted to comment, I was, uh, uh, real, uh, real glad to see the training that principals and social workers and, and, and staff received, um, in terms of, uh, recognizing behaviors and indicators of an active shooter or catastrophic event, and that it was presented by the FBI, and I, I just, that, that this is an issue that's, uh, kind of close to my heart, and so I really, uh, was glad to see that, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Member Welty?
Thank you, Chair Murneke. Um, this sort of ties in with what just happened up at Central, except that it's not about Central, and I don't know that this is necessarily the place to, to, to have a long detailed question, but, but that damage, uh, involved, uh, a fifty-five thousand dollar, uh, unit and, and removal of a couple hundred dollars worth of copper from it, so for a very small benefit to the, the thieves, we, we, we had damage to a significant property, which leads me to something that a number of people have asked me about, and, and, uh, I don't particularly know how to, to respond to it, and that is to the, the, what I understand is a massive copper front on one of our New Junior High Schools, and I've had a lot of people say, oh, wait till somebody comes in and starts removing that. I, I presume, as somebody who has seen the bronze, um, the bronze plaques repeatedly removed through the years up on Skyline Drive, that, that, that is a concern that was probably considered at some point, um, I'd be interested in knowing what, what, uh, unless we're giving away details for potential thieves, what sort of deterrent there might be for, for anybody who gets ambitious and, and, and contemplate something like that.
Mr. Leiter, would you like to respond?
Member Welty, uh, members of the board, I, just briefly, I think, um, there's, there's a number of security factors built into our site's systems, um, that would, would and should make the, um, theft of any materials from our properties, um, more likely to apprehend the culprits or the vandals or thieves. In, in the specific case of exterior materials on our, our building at, at that site, fortunately those materials are, um, well above, um, step ladder height, requiring extension ladders to, to get up to it, and the way that the materials are installed would be very difficult to, uh, remove without spending an awful lot of time and have some power tools to, to do in the process, so, um, you know, there's, there, there is risk there, but there's also the rewards relative to the types of materials, the life cycle, um, benefits of, of those materials and the design benefits as well.
Thank you. Six F, Member Johnston?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a good discussion on, on decision-making from, by the superintendent, I want to thank, uh, Chair Murneke and superintendent for putting this on the agenda. Uh, and, you know, I really appreciated particularly some of the in-depth stuff he had about, uh, teachers, how decisions are made, the fifteen hundred decisions a day the teachers make, we know that's very important. One of the things though, that I was, you know, again, I have complete faith in our teachers to, to make those decisions, and, I was more interested in the high of decisions, for example, legal, H R, budget, those kind of things, and we, we had some discussion on that. And one of the things, and, and I'm gonna put the superintendent on the spot, but this is a, this is a benevolent question, I think, is that you'd indicated when you started that you were told that, that school board members were supposed to go through the chair, and then that they would talk to you, I'm just curious, you certainly don't have to say it, but, uh, who told you that?
Um, boy, I believe it was the board leadership when I, when I started, uh, that was also the case when I was assistant superintendent, uh, when Superintendent Dixon was in place, and I believe that, um, Dr. Foster used the, the same practice while he was here.
I thought, again, I thought that was very peculiar, certainly like to, like to hear what, uh, people are being told, but I, I relayed the, the dis, the discussion that I had with one of the previous chairs when he told me quite emphatically that, uh, I do what he says, end of discussion. And, yeah, I didn't think that was quite appropriate, and luckily he's not on the board anymore, but I'm hoping that such attitudes are, uh, thing of the past. I would certainly hope that the superintendent thinks, and I'm hoping that this board thinks that the only person that can talk to the superintendent is the chair, that's certainly inappropriate. I think that you indicated further in the discussion that, I think you've said, that you always have access to me, and, you know, I'm thinking, I'm hoping at least that, that you don't agree with that former philosophy, um, so, um, uh, is it fair to say that you don't? I don't want to put you on the spot again, but it is kind of a, kind of an important thing.
Superintendent Grandseth?
Well, and, and I'm, I'm glad you pointed out that I did say that, uh, all of you have access to me, I think I've, excuse me, I have a tickle in my throat tonight, um, I've had conversations with all of you, I've emailed with all of you, I've had phone conversations with all of you and one-on-one meetings with all of you. I believe, uh, the specific comments that I was talking about that would go through, uh, the chair were, um, specific data requests, um, and that's what I, uh, meant to, to specify, but maybe I wasn't clear about that.
I had the pleasure of, of sitting with Superintendent Grandseth at the, uh, Community Foundation Awards, and it was the normal rubber chicken and coal peas, but, um, I was, I guess shocked is a term, it's a number of times his phone went off, and a number of times people texted him about, you know, what's this, what's this, what's this, and, um, I, for one thing, he, he does a, a great job of trying to get back to students, to principals, to teachers, to community members, and the school board members. Member Harla?
I would just say that my understanding, coming on the board, um, was that we elected leadership within the board, the chair, the, um, the vice chair, the clerk, and the, um, man, it's, what time is it?
Almost eight-thirty.
So, so in, in doing that, the, when we had the chair, it was the, is some of the conversation, if we had direct conversations about things, we could connect with the administration, but when it came to the direction of where the board was gonna go, the super, uh, the chair and the clerk, um, were appointed by the board in order to do that for this year, and then that changes every year so that we can, um, do that knowing, and that we'll have that conversation at our January fifth meeting, so I have, I, I am hearing what you're saying, Member Johnston, in that you don't want it to go through one person, but it, I'm saying the direction of the board is where I understood that to go.
I have one more meeting in December. Member Johnston?
Uh, sure, uh, yeah, one of the other things that you said, you know, was, you mentioned that you obviously use your staff to advise us, everybody does, and that's very important, but you did mention that, uh, you said pretty emphatically that the buck stops with you, and, uh, uh, that's, that's good, you know, I'd like to know where some of these decisions are coming from, sometimes I've not known, I've heard things that there's votes taken, uh, on, on important things like H R decisions and legal things, and it's, I'm glad to know that, uh, that you think the buck does stop with you. And, you know, I, I would like to, to say that, again, I don't feel real welcome in your office anymore, you know, which I think is very sad because of, you know, I'm always very proud to say that you and I used to have some pretty fun conversations, we disagreed on very, or we agreed on very little, but we certainly did have some discussions. I think that shows that again, I think we would, we as a board would have been much better at doing some kind of, uh, team building or working with the civility project rather than shunning their involvement with us, and instead hiring eighty thousand dollars in lawyers, I think, was a wrong tack, and I don't think that's, uh, benefits, and since the buck stops with you, I'm asking to, uh, let's, uh, change our course a little bit.
Superintendent Grandseth?
Um, I would say that as the school board, the buck stops with you, and the only voting that goes on about H R decisions is made by you. Um, I make recommendations with consultation with staff, and there's a, a whole list of community groups that I get, uh, advice from as well, and professionals, including legal counsel, bond counsel, financial advisors, um, but this school district is run by the school board, uh, you hire me to follow through with what you want done. Uh, I will say that at times it is difficult for a superintendent, um, when we need direction from the board, one way or another, we do look to, uh, the chair and the clerk, the board leadership, to, uh, give us a direction to head, um, and so we do count, uh, on the chair and, and the clerk, and I will say that with each chair that there has been on the board, I do, uh, develop a strong relationship with that person because, uh, I need to know that the chair, as leader of the board, is really sharing information with me and giving me, uh, the direction that the board would like to go. Um, as far as your comfort level in my office, I can't say that my, uh, comfort level is very high either, and that is unfortunate, I will say, um, that certainly, uh, decisions that you're putting on me, uh, weren't totally made by me, and this isn't, uh, the place or the time, uh, for a conversation about that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the business committee report, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? I'm sorry, six to one. There are special, no special resolutions for questions. I would just like to say, it's Thanksgiving coming up, and we have a lot to be thankful for in this country. I want to direct my thanks to two members, Mr. Manning, Mr. Tremble. You are the reasons why we spend so much time for you, working for you, and we're hoping you guys have the best in the future. You two are symbolic of the students that we really appreciate. With that, Mr. Manning, you go first.
We'll see you next month. You have to say goodbye.
Yes, I know. No, no, that was just my thanks, though.
Well.
You're done. Kobe, you can stay, but Mr. Manning is gone.
Okay.
You're still up.
Some pretty great things. Good to hear about all the good stuff going on. There are some great things that come up in these meetings still, little nuggets you can find in it. We're on the TV, which I found out, so that makes some good entertainment for some, I'm sure. Just going over one thing, I bring it up every couple of months, but with the agenda that you set, there are different sections for different things. And there's, you know, the order and the report of the standing committees generally has to do with education, so it's great to hear about the education. But toward the end, there's one that says questions or other, and I love to hear everything you have to say about things that aren't related to education during that time. So just maybe think about that as the next representative comes up in next month. Maybe just have one last meeting where we can have other things put in the questions or other section.
Sure. And at this point, you can bring things up.
Yeah, yeah, totally.
Okay, Mr. Tremble.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment on fabrication laboratory.
Yes.
Curriculum. I think it's great that we add as much diversity as possible to our curriculum. I think having as diverse a curriculum as possible is very important. I enjoy to see more things like language, more language classes, more industrial or tech classes, things like that. I know it's, some of them are kind of impractical to implement, but I know that of a few students who, even that one, they probably would have enjoyed taking the class if they had the opportunity, and others. So I think this would be a great addition along with anything else that we would want to add to the curriculum.
Thank you, Mr. Tremble. Back in the stone ages when Mr. Westholme and I went to Denfeld, there was a diverse curriculum. And we all could get along with each other, and some kids took certain classes and other kids took certain classes. There was a course called Smith Hughes that was mostly for technical and that. The problem, and all seven board members will tell you this, is the federal and the state come in and say, you will do this, and we're going to test you, and we're going to test you, and we're going to test you, and if you don't test well, we're going to say you failed. So we have to prepare for those tests or they'll label us. And that's the tough thing. And like I say, if we could let the kids take more art classes, take more Fab Lab classes, take music and college prep and whatever, and I think we'd have a happier student body and a more successful student body. So what you say is absolutely right. Member Harla. I'm sorry, Member Laffler Kemp.
Okay. Just, you reminded, we are on TV, and so I did want to put in a plug again for the public to go to our website, check out our annual report, our video, and celebrate with us some of the achievements that are going on in the district. And Superintendent Grandseth mentioned it, but I'll just say again to the public, please come out to our many holiday programs that are going on across the city in the next month.
Thank you. Member Harla.
And I just want to say that I'm glad that we have, when we rearranged our curriculum, when we rearranged our administration this last year, we put in place someone that could be in charge of curriculum and instruction. And I also know that we put into place some folks that are doing things with technology learning and getting more technology into the classrooms and seeing how our teachers are learning in school. I hope that more integrated learning is happening across the district. So we do test, but we test as an end, and we work with our students not only just to test, but also to be good citizens. So I appreciate that we have that in place, but also appreciate your comments because maybe that could be weaved into different coursework or, and I wonder if you experience that in your classrooms at times, too. Maybe we could have a conversation offline about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Westholme.
Just in reaction to your response that we are from the, we're from the stone ages, that I am much younger than you are, so.
Member Grandseth.
One last comment. Speaking of stone ages, and happy birthday to your son, and happy birthday to Dr. Carey this evening.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Stay warm. We are adjourned.